Welcome to the Melville School District Board of Education meeting. If we could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. I would like to do a roll call first. Tori Belkey.
Here.
Scott Huggerich.
Here.
Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
Jean Preto.
Here.
Jeff Woolman.
Present.
Grace Wright is not here tonight, and I'm Peggy Hassler. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, we do not have anybody's, but we're not there yet, so hold on. First, we're going to do recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. So if we could have Dr. Moss with Forter Elementary.
I brought my Sunshine Club with me this evening, and they are sponsored by Mrs. Roper and Mrs. Overlander. And Mrs. Roper teaches reading at Forter, and Mrs. Overlander is a second grade teacher at Forter. And Nyla's going to share just a little bit about what Sunshine Club does.
Forter Sunshine Club meets weekly to spread joy, kindness, and appreciation to all those involved in making Forter great. For example, we retreats in the teacher's lounge with inspiring notes, acknowledging appreciation days throughout the year, and hanging posters with positive messages around the school.
And then I just wanted to share that we were really excited. We feel like part of the efforts from our Sunshine Club, our panorama survey, our staff climate was up 7% from the fall, and it was 5% above the school district. So we were really excited. We feel like their efforts really paid off this school year. This is our Sunshine Club.
If I could please have Dr. Debbie Reed representing Point Elementary.
Tonight I have part of Point's Book Battle team with us. Every year, Melville hosts the Book Battle, and the Book Battle promotes and supports student preparation, engagement, continuous improvement, and innovation. It creates a friendly competition while encouraging students to read Mark Twain-nominated books. It supports our portrait of a graduate by creating critical thinkers who are self-aware, persistent, and ethical and global citizens. These students read five or more Mark Twain-nominated books and were part of the biggest team at the Book Battle. Point brought 21 students to the Book Battle this year and had three teams battle. I am so proud to say that one of our teams took second place in the battle after five tiebreaker rounds. Way to go, Point.
Book Battle Club. Next is the MNEA with Deana McKelvey.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deana McKelvey, and I am president of Melville MNEA. And tonight, we're really excited to have two very deserving Students of the Month. And if we could have the student from Forter and the teacher who's going to be awarding, please approach the podium.
Hello, everybody. The month of April, our character word is cooperation. And when I think of this trait, Jackson immediately comes to mind. Throughout his career at Forter, Jackson has been calm and is really good at keeping his cool even when others are upset. He is calm, fair-minded, and easy to get along with. Jackson demonstrates empathy for others and steps up when others need help. Jackson always works hard in class and is a positive role model. Our class is a better place because he is there. He has represented our school in the Book Battle and showed great resilience at Tremont. Because of all this, Jackson is our Student of the Month.
And then we also have a student and, I believe, a teacher from, oh, yeah, from Point. Sorry. Do you have it printed? Poor Ava has no clue why she's here tonight. That was not me, that was her mom. So this is Ava, and she is a wonderful example of a Point Eagle with character. Something that's really cool about Ava was, this was her very first year in Melville, her first year at Point. And fifth grade is not an easy year, and definitely not an easy year to be the new student. So she did an excellent job with that transition, and she worked hard to make friends, to grow as a learner. And in fact, she grew so much that from our fall to our winter benchmarks, she grew in both reading and math. And in fact, in math alone, she grew by nearly two grade levels. And that is just proof of how hard she worked to be successful, to get over any of those jitters and that uncomfortableness of being the new student. And the best part for me as her teacher, I have really seen her grow in her confidence in math, and she's not afraid to, if they're doing partner work, to clarify and say, "No, I think it's this," and because of this. And so I love seeing that and seeing that confidence in her. And I just know that she's going to continue to grow and blossom, and I just have really enjoyed getting to know her, and I can't wait to hear more about her as she moves on to middle school and continues to be a wonderful student here at Melville. So congratulations, Ava.
So I'll be over here. Yeah, yeah. to see your children again, you can probably see them from the front view on YouTube. And then also, their pictures will be posted on social media, I would imagine, by tomorrow, if not tonight. So you can get good pictures from that avenue. So next up, we have student advisors on the board. So tonight, Amar Nuhanovic from Oakville is here with us, and then Arnella Abdic from Melville is normally here, but she wasn't available tonight. So I like to tell the students in the audience about this. When they get into high school, they can apply to be a student representative for their school on the Board of Education. So they participate in our meetings for a year and talk to us about what's happening in their schools, or if they have any concerns, and give us sort of the student perspective of what's going on in the high schools. So just something to thrive for, or be on your radar as you move into high school. So open period for patron comments. We don't have anybody signed up, and so we will move on to number five on the agenda, student achievement. What? He didn't, no, he didn't have anything. Yeah, thanks. So first up will be Forter Elementary, Dr. Whitney Moss. And I do want to remind everyone also that any questions that were asked prior to the meeting are on our Melville School District Board of Education e-board, so you can see questions there.
Okay, good evening. As Peggy said, I'm Dr. Moss, principal at Forter Elementary, and I'm excited to share a little bit with you this evening about Forter. So one of our points of pride at Forter, and we talked about it a little bit with Sunshine Club, is our sense of community that we have within our school. And we really partner with our PTO to develop events that bring our families into our school to make them comfortable in that space where their students are learning each and every day. So a few things that we do at Forter are back-to-school barbecue. So our Meet the Teacher night is not just come up and meet your teacher, but it is a full-fledged barbecue that is free for all of our families, and we partner with St. Luke's for that. They provide all the food. But it's a really big back-to-school, celebrating the school year event. We have a few other events that we do throughout the year, like movie night and skate night. The picture we have here is from breakfast with books, where our families came in and had breakfast and then enjoyed reading with their children. We got really positive feedback from that, from our families, that they, one, it worked for their schedule because they could go before work, and then also that they just had time to just be in the school setting with their child. And then we wrap up the school year with the end-of-the-year block party, where kids bring up bikes and scooters, and we give away helmets, because we do require them to wear a helmet. So we also give them away if they don't have them, and that kind of wraps up our school year, so we'll be having that here soon. Another point of pride is just those opportunities for our students. And here is pictured our Sunshine Club. We joked, one of the boys was like, "We have to take a picture?" Because we always make them take pictures. I think that's the one we sent to the school board for School Board Appreciation Week. But we have 11 clubs that are sponsored by Forter staff, and then we also partner with community education to provide opportunities as well. And this is just a little bit of information about Forter. You'll see the past five years' historical enrollment. We're up a little bit from previous years. We had 405 students this year, pre-K through fifth grade. And then just a little bit of a breakdown, you can see per grade level how many students we have, how many students receive free and reduced lunch, how many are on our multilingual students, and then how many receive special education services. Of those 405 students, 34% of our students are multilingual learners. This has been a little bit of a unique year for Forter. We've had a really big influx in students that are newcomers to our school, and we actually, we have eight currently, and we have three more starting on Monday. So it's been more than we've ever experienced, and it's been a great experience for everybody involved, our students and our teachers. Also, we have nine students who have limited or interrupted formal education, so possibly they came in and out of the United States, or they hadn't attended school in the actual school setting before. And then 12 of those students who receive ELD services also receive IEP services as well. 44% of our students are on free and reduced lunch, and 20% of our students receive special education service. That was a little bit about the students. Now, looking at our educators, you can kind of see we have a pretty tenured staff. The blue bars represent our teachers' years in education, and then the red is the years in Melville. So it's kind of nice to see, a lot of our teachers have been sticking around at Forter, and you see a lot of red and blue, very similar time. And when it comes to our highest degrees, we have 82% is our biggest category with our masters, but then we also have three staff members that have their doctorates and a staff member that has her specialist as well. So only 8.8% only have their bachelor's. So a lot of them have degrees beyond their bachelor's degree. For our, looking at our academic achievement, you can see our iReady data. The left chart compares just the spring, so the end of the year for the past three years. And then the right one is looking at our this year's scores. From fall to winter, we're getting ready in May to take our spring benchmark. But we are excited for reading. We're getting a lot of our students out of those Tier 2 through Tier 3 interventions, back into the Tier 1 curriculum. We're still working on that for math as well. We have a little bit more students in the Tier 2, so really, we're focusing on math interventions and how we can boost them back up into Tier 1 and not needing those interventions. For our building improvement goals, we're looking for all students to show reading proficiency as outlined by those state regulations, supporting our students who have those reading success plans. All students showing an increase in math proficiency from the start to the end of the school year. And then we're also looking at attendance, wanting our kids to be above that 90-90 target. And we also have been very specific about teaching emotional regulation skills, and with teaching and modeling those expected behaviors and what behaviors are unexpected, and hoping that also improves our sense of belonging within our school. We've also utilized that MTSS framework and that PLC process to support our students that maybe need support beyond just that Tier 1 core instruction. We also, along with the rest of the district, have been going through that PLC process and meeting weekly. Teams have been meeting to plan instruction to be purposeable with their planning and targeted instruction. And just upcoming things we're excited about, I love this guy's little face because he looks so excited about learning. We have been doing a lot of work with that professional learning communities and the multi-tiered students to support. So we had really, the past few years, really focused on what do we do with our kids that are in those Tier 2, Tier 3 interventions? And now we've really also started to look more systematically at our programming, and we found that to be really effective. So we're really seeing students moving out of those Tier 2, Tier 3 interventions, and our universals are the Tier 1, what we've chosen, is hitting the needs that they have. So we've also been really trying to strengthen our core. Forter was really lucky to be able to pilot some of the phonics programs in the district, and we found those really effective, so we're really excited for where we're going with ELA. And then also, our Prop S construction is well underway. If you stop by Forter, our security entrance is really far along. We're waiting on some doors and a few things, but we're going to be ready, I think, for school start, so that's exciting. A little bit about Forter? And then that's just our thank you. That starts with hello, week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to Forter and Dr. Moss and all of the staff, because, and the kids, of course, but without you guys, we appreciate the wonderful job that you all do. So thank you. Next up is Point Elementary, Dr. Debbie Reed.
I'm excited to talk to you tonight about some of the things that are happening at Point Elementary and the results that we are seeing. So Reading Buddies is one of the things that we are very excited about at Point, and this happens first thing in the morning, every morning. And this involves our fourth and fifth graders, our kindergarten, first and second graders. And it's really a fun thing to see in the mornings. The kids are very excited about it. It builds and teaches literacy skills for our young learners, and it teaches leadership skills for our older students. Two days a week, the students read books together. Two days a week, they do literacy instruction together, and then on the last day of the week, they play games together. Another thing that is, an amazing thing that's happening at Point, is that we celebrate Success Monthly at our assemblies. We also recognize different groups at our assemblies monthly, and those happen on our early release days. We just recognized our Beta Club, our Book Battle Team, and our Exercising Eagles. We've also recognized students that attended Tremont, who are in our Honor Choir, and our Reading Buddies groups. We also celebrate success by celebrating our classrooms that have earned our 20 yellow slips, and they earn yellow slips by following our building-wide expectations. They can earn those in specials classes, they can earn them at lunch, at recess, and any staff member can give a class a yellow slip. We also have incorporated teachers into our assemblies, and those teachers whose class have earned 20 yellow slips come up, and we have fun things happening, and students get very excited about that. So if you're ever in the area on an early release day, come by Point because we're having a lot of fun there. This page goes over our enrollment. Currently, we're at 412 students. We've dropped a little bit since 2019, 2020, but we've been sitting right at about 410, 412. And then the next, over on the right side, is our grade levels and subgroups. We are pretty consistent. Our kindergarten class is a little bit smaller, and our fourth grade class is pretty large, as you can see. And then our subgroups there, our free and reduced lunch, we are in the teens across the board. Our EL, we don't have a very large EL population at Point, but we are growing. And our students that receive special education is, we have about 10 per grade. Our certified staff. I'm pretty proud of our certified staff at Point. We have 82%, similar to Forter, that have master's degrees, and we only have And we only have 14% that have bachelor, that are, have their bachelor's degrees. I've talked to those teachers, and what's interesting is they are either in master's programs now or going to start a master's program soon, which is good. Their years in education and years at Point are pretty high. We do not have a lot of inexperienced teachers at Point, and the teachers that come to Point seem to stay at Point, which is very good. We have a lot of staff members that are also parents at Point. So it makes for a really good atmosphere. Here's our assessment data. And I'm very proud of our assessment data. We have stayed, over the historical data, we hover for reading and at about, right at about 80. And that has stayed the same over the last three years. Our, our leadership team set a goal for 85% this year, so I'm really hoping that we make that goal. As you can see, for the fall and winter comparison, the numbers on, are not on there, but we went from 44 in Tier 1% to 70%. So I know that our students can get there in the spring, in just a few weeks when we take the assessment, to get to 85%. So we have some structures in place, and our reading structures are, are solid, and I have no doubt that our, our students will get there. Our math. We stick right around 70, 75% in the last three years. And we have really honed in on our math instruction. And our teachers are working really hard. We've participated in the professional development the districts provided, as well as had some of our own professional development in math. Our math interventionist has really worked hard with our teachers, especially in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, to provide solid math instruction and provide strategies to those teachers as well. If you look at the fall and winter comparison, we went from 25% of Tier 1 to 53%. And our goal for this year, that our BLT set, was 80%. So it's going to be tough to get there, but I think we can get there. Our building improvement plan, we, goals. Again, we are working hard on those and have put a lot of structures in place. And we want to see all students make a year's worth of growth in reading. We also want our students to make typical growth in math. And our 90% of students, we are right there at meeting that target right now. We do second steps and, or SEL. We have MTS structures in place, and we are implementing PLCs in some of our grade levels. And one thing we're really excited about, if you can attend next Thursday, we have our Spotlight on Point. And our Spotlight on Point is a talent show, but also, we have our art fair and our book fair. So it's a very big community event. We have all kinds of acts that are happening, from singing and dancing to, last year, we had a student that did the Rubik's Cube in under 30 seconds. It was really cool because he did not do it in under 30 seconds the first time. And his peers cheered him on and really said, "You can do it." And so he ended up doing it, and it was just the most amazing thing to watch and see. So if you're around, please come to Point next week and, and watch all the cool, amazing acts that are going to take place. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and thank your staff. And a couple of things, what time is the Point present?
It's at 6:30.
6:30, okay. And then the other question I had, or the favor is, would you let us know by email what your final goals, what goals you reached?
Yes, yes.
I would love to hear that.
Yes, yes.
All right, great.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I think it's outstanding. If you could bring your reading Tier 1 to 85, like your goal is set, and your math Tier 1 to 80, I mean, I think that would be phenomenal. I know, I know those are hard goals, but the fact that you're shooting for those and really going for it, I think is phenomenal. So just good luck to you and your staff on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to governance, budget development, Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, and I'm presenting the preliminary budget for fiscal year '25. Now, these are very small slides, so I'm going to be speaking on three slides. So on your e-boards, there's about 50 pages on that budget file. So if you really just focus on the very first page of the cash flow section, and the first page of the revenue section, and the first page of the expense section, that's the three pages I'm going to be speaking. So first up would be the cash flow, page 1. And basically, just going through the highlights of that is, just starting from the top, cash reserve percentage is 33.7% forecast for this year. And the budget for next year would be similar, at 32.5%. The operating gain for this year is forecast around $300,000 gain, which is really, with our size budget, that's basically like break even. And the forecast, or the budget for next year, is break even at zero. The non-operating loss shows a sizable loss, but that's just because we're basically spending Prop S money on projects for money that we received back in fiscal year '21. So that's why it shows non-operating loss. We'll look at revenue and expense details here shortly. And if you work your way down on that first page, and look at the finance dashboard section, there's three, three cells that are highlighted yellow. And it really just shows the finance dashboard that we talk about a lot on our meetings. Shows that the tax rate ranks 18th place. That's the 18th lowest in the, in the county. Operating expenses per student ranks 20th, and debt per student ranks 21st. So those are pretty low rankings, but the tax rate is still better than what it used to be. So we're, we're making progress. If we work our way down to note, footnote 2, you'll see a little table on capital funds. And basically, if you look at the general tax levy line item, you'll see, it shows the amount of money that's going into the capital fund for this year and, and next year's budget. So this year, we're showing $21,431 as a forecast estimate. The budget next year is $20,308, and that's a decrease of $1.1 million. So basically, what we're doing is, we're, we're slightly decreasing the amount that we're putting in the capital fund, and we're moving that over to the operating fund so that we can have that break even on the operating fund. We can have a net, net zero, not have a loss. So when you look at historically what we have put into the capital fund, back in fiscal year '23, we put $9.4 million into the capital fund. In fiscal year '24, we put a lot more, 23, over $23 million in there because we had a lot of tax revenue came in. So in fiscal year '25, we're still over $22 million. So we're only decreasing that number, $1.1 million from this current year. But we're still, at $22 million next year, we're still way over the $9 million that we had in fiscal year '23. So we're in really good shape with how much money is going into the capital funds. And because of that, the money going there, that's why we've been earmarking each year a, you know, a certain amount of money for the HVAC replacement. This year, we've got $11 million going into the HVAC reserves. Next year, we're budgeting $6 million for that. Following year, $6 million for HVAC replacements. And then in fiscal year '27, $1 million. And all of that helps us avoid having a bond to, to, you know, pay for the $33 million replacements. And that saves us about $12 million in interest expense over, over the long haul. So then, finally, on footnote 4 on that page, it just talks about the transfers. And so just to re-familiar, refamiliarize everybody with what we do on the transfers. Every year, we transfer $1,750 for Prop R. We have food service transfers to cover the capital costs related to food service. So we take money out of the food service fund and put it into the capital fund to cover that cost. And then this year, we are going to be transferring $1.1 million, probably in the month of May, to, to put into the HVAC reserves from the general fund. We spoke about that in the November budget adjustment session. And that will go with the other 10 million. So that makes a total of $11 million this year going into that fund. And then, and then next year, targeting the $6 million budget amount. And something that's not really footnoted in here, and it'll, it'll be in the future, in the May budget package, just noting that this year, we had budgeted transferring $1.3 million from the general fund into the self-insurance fund. And next year, we're budgeting $650,000 to go from the general fund into the self-insurance fund to help out with the losses that are going on there and eventually get to the point where we don't have any transfer. But that was, that helped avoid huge spikes in the rates. So basically, those are the highlights on the cash flow page. And then if you go into the revenue section, I'll go through some highlights there. Basically, on the revenue page, that's very similar to what we talked about in the March board meeting. So, I can't say that. So in the, basically, overall, our revenue is going up $2.6 million or 1.6%. And really, the, you know, the main components of local taxes and basic formula and sales tax, those are the same assumptions that we really discussed in March. Just to reiterate on the local taxes, one cent of tax levy looks to be about $257,000 of revenue. And the other thing, just to remember, it's very important to remember that if we do any voluntary rollbacks this year, that you can't reverse that for two more years. So it wouldn't be able to be reversed until September of 2026, which is fiscal year '27. The basic formula, the SAT goes up 6% to $6,760 per, per student. And on the sales tax, that increases 10% up to $1,513 per student. So once again, it's really pretty repetitive of, of what we covered in March. Nothing much there has changed. And then finally, if we go to the expense page, expenses are up overall about $9.3 million, 5.7%. And of that, on the operating side, really, it's about $4.8 million increase, which is about 3.5% increase on the operating. You won't see that on the schedule, but that's how it breaks down. So when you look at that initially as a 5.7% increase, you've got, that's both operating and non-operating. And the operating piece is really about 3.5% of that. And so when you look down in the footnotes on that page, you're going to see salaries and benefits are really comprised of 3.7% increases to the teacher base and to the hourly staff base. We also collapsed one of the tiers on the teacher's salary schedule. And then on the staffing side, for Essar Funding, we had been funding 34 interventionists. As you know, we reduced the interventionists from 34 down to 19. And then we reduced the at-home staff, which reduced 18 positions. We added two assistant principals. So that really highlights, you know, the, the key changes to the staffing. On the health insurance side, we spent about $13 million a year on that. The increase on that is almost break even because we had costs incurred with a 6% rate. First of all, insurance, we're self-insured, and that managed that on a calendar basis. And so this January, we had a 6% rate increase. Next January, January of 2025, we're budgeting a 13% rate increase. Both of those rate increases obviously add cost to our expenses. But we also talked about having a general fund transfer next year of only $650,000 instead of $1.3 million that we're doing this year. So that's a reduction of expense by $650,000. And then we also, with the staff changes on the at-home and the interventionists, we have less staff, and that saves about $400,000 of insurance as well. So those reductions offset most of the increase. So it's pretty much a break even on the budget for the total health insurance. We're still at, you know, $13 million. And other than that, that's, those are the highlights of the budget. Are there any questions?
So over the last couple of meetings, you mentioned the idea of a rollback. If, if that were to be entertained, which I'm not advocating for, but does it come down to the fact that we would put less money into the capital fund than what we're currently projecting it putting into it? Or would a, would a rollback cause cuts elsewhere?
I think we'd have to think about that, have all summer long to discuss, you know, what kind of, if, you know, if the board was considering that, and where we would, you know, best put that.
Gotcha. But we approved the budget, in theory, in June, and then we set the tax rate. According to the approved budget, we, we set that then in September.
Yeah, but we can adjust the budget. So, I mean, we can initially, you know, we can initially prepare a budget, and then if there's further discussion and further thought, we can, we can adjust the budget, so.
Basically, the, the decision that then just really comes down to September.
Yeah, we, we have to make this, the decision before the September tax rate here.
Yeah. Okay. And so you, you, in the questions that we submitted, you said that you're going to have more of a capital plan by next meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, there should be capital schedules in the May board meeting. So, yeah, there'll be, there'll be more data.
All right, thank you.
So since fiscal year '24 tax collections are $8 million behind pace, what's the impact to the fiscal year '25 budget if collections don't fully catch up?
That's a good question. So, you know, really never had this kind of doubling of protested taxes. So what I would expect is, you know, we're going to see, first of all, what we're going to end up collecting hopefully in May or early June, see if we fully collect, you know, catch up. But if we don't fully catch up, what that tells me then is, is that a portion of that is expected to be collected as delinquent taxes in the future. In the future, it could be next year. It could be the following year. It just, it's when the taxpayer decides to make that tax payment. So I would expect that most of that catch up would occur, you know, with the later delinquent tax payments. So that would increase our delinquent taxes. I also know that with a doubling of the protested taxes, there could also be additional protested tax refund next year, which is a negative collection. I don't think that that would be as much as the delinquent taxes. But basically, we're in a gray area. We'd have to see where that precisely falls. But I would still expect most of that catch up to be made with delinquent tax collection. But that's, that's just my estimate.
So, okay, so with everything, and thank you for that answer. And I know this is all still preliminary. But with everything going on in Jeff City specifically, how are we estimating 20, fiscal year '24 WADA for the basic formula fiscal year '25 budgeted revenue?
So there's a couple of things. Initially, here on the budget estimate, first of all, I looked at the attendance that we have in September and January. And when you look at just those two dates, the attendance goes up 3.2%. I used a conservative 2% just because I, you know, can't guarantee that it is 3.2%. So I just want to be conservative. The difference in that is $775,000. So I feel like that's a conservative way to, you know, to approach the WADA because you just really never know until it comes in what you've got. you just really never know until it comes in what you've got. But if it turns out it really is three point two percent, then that extra seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars can either help cover, if we do have tax collection shortfall this year, that extra seven seventy five next year could help offset maybe tax collection shortfalls this year. Or if we don't have the tax shortfall and we have just additional seven hundred and seventy five thousand, then we can discuss whether or not we want to move that over to the capital fund to use for potential Prop S projects that we couldn't do under Prop S. We ran out of money, and we couldn't do the project. We could potentially use that for, for those projects.
Okay. And then having to do with the St. Louis County government or the St. Louis County Council, I know last night, again, they still didn't do the senior tax credit or tax freeze. So I'm curious if we have any idea how, if that does pa, end up passing through St. Louis County, how the revenue, that revenue would impact the fiscal year twenty five for the potential real estate tax freeze for senior citizens. Do I, do we have any idea?
Well, my, my understanding is that that would go into effect for the fall of twenty twenty five taxes, which is fiscal year twenty six. So it really shouldn't affect fiscal year twenty five. But if, but at this point, we don't really even have any basis to even calculate the impact fiscal year twenty six until we would ever get more data from the county. And right now, there's a lot of people's opinions as to whether or not that's really going to make it into effect by fall of twenty twenty five. But regardless of the opinions, we really can't make an estimate until we have just basic data as a basis of a calculation.
And then I guess it would depend on how many people, because it's going to be an application process for those people that want that freeze. So it'll depend, I guess, on how many people actually apply for it.
Yeah, I think what we've really got to have is, we've got to have data from the county, some kind of estimates or just, we're going to have to get some kind of data from the county to be able to make a calculation.
Yeah, and I don't know that they have that data.
They don't right now. And I don't know when they're going to have it.
Okay, all right. Okay, anybody else?
Plus, they're also trying to fix Senate Bill one ninety if that caused all this to start in the first place. They're trying to make the legal in it not as wide open and subject to interpretation. So whatever they're planning now, they might have to scrap it in September anyway because legislature changes and clarifies some of the things they're not sure about.
One, the other thing too is, I mean, before they, the reality is of actually putting that into action, people start doing the math, there's going to be pretty significant impacts. So I still think there's going to be a lot of discussions before they ever actually pull the trigger to put that into play.
Yeah, plus, they're supposed to spend, I think, one point three million at a minimum to just put it into place, and they haven't even found that money yet. And they're having problems finding just the three hundred thousand they're supposedly starting it with. So that may get dragged out into twenty six whether they want it or not.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Marshall. All right, next is Prop S update, Steve Wendell.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Steve Wendell. I'll be doing the Prop S update tonight. The first slide, as always, is our completed jobs from Prop S. We're not adding any to the, to the list tonight. And then we'll go into the school by school update. The first one is Beerbaum Elementary Phase Two. We're making, continuing to make progress. It's mostly concrete work. We're trying to wrap up the concrete work in about the next, call it, three weeks or so. They've been working their way out to the east, and then we'll be pouring the floor slab also in the next month here. And then we'll be moving on to setting some of the steel, steel decking on the, onto the foundations. So making good progress at Beerbaum. And then the other thing is, we're also starting to plan for the summer work, which will be going into the school after school finishes and doing the interior sprinkling work, fire sprinkler work. Point Elementary, a little bit of good news. We got the teachers' rooms and the bathrooms completed and in service, so that's, that's the good news. The other two bullet points are not so good. We did have the fire rated storefront delivered for the office. Two of the door swings were incorrect, and they need to be reworked. And that is going to take us past this school year, and we'll be completing that into the summer, unfortunately. No, no financial impact, but it is a scheduled delay for the office. And then the other news is that the handrail out back, which has been somewhat of a saga over the last few months, we've had continued welding quality issues on the handrail. We could not get an acceptable sample from the subcontractor, and we've decided to pull that scope, and we're directly contracting with somebody local, the company that did the handrails at Blade School. So we have that P O. in place now. That'll also not get, because we're kind of starting anew, it's not going to be completed this school year, but they will finish it by about mid, midpoint of the summer. So, that's it. On Point, on Forder, you heard Dr. Moss say that we did get mobilized here over the last month. We did get a significant amount of the demolition done and some of the new construction done. This is just a picture that shows the, the entrance way where we've demoed the interior set of doors. We'll be putting in a new storefront. But the, the contractor's kind of gotten all the work done that he can until the summer period. So he's temporarily stopped work here, and then he's moved over to Beasley School, and he just started work there this week. So starting soon, Woolwood and Oakville Middle, we have not mobilized there yet. We're going to be having another meeting with the contractor here in May and getting ready for, basically, the first day of summer, we'll be, we'll have feet on the floor at those two schools. Berkeley and Beasley, as I mentioned just a minute ago, Beasley, we actually did get mobilized on this week. I just didn't have time to get any photos in there. You'll have, you'll see some of that next month. And Berkeley, we're planning on getting to here by the first day of summer. And then at Mosaic, we did award that last month, and so we did get a pre-construction meeting done with Aspire last week. And we've got some upcoming meetings, but we're, we're not mobilized there yet either also until the first day of summer. Then after that, we are, for Washington, we are just about ready to have the bid package hit the street. That should be next week, and we'll be getting the bids back by end of May. And Trout Wine, we're just finalizing on the design on that one, so we're not ready for bidding yet, but we'll be doing that in June. And then starting construction maybe by the very end of summer, but, but likely right around when school's beginning in the fall. And then Mosaic Elementary Phase Two is, is really for the following summer. That's the ADA scope, the elevators, the accessibility scope. And then I'll pop up the finances, the latest finances, and I'll pause if anyone has any questions. Yep?
With regard to the Point issue, do we not have some sort of time or delay penalties in our contract?
We do.
The situation is just out of control.
Yeah, we do, and we need to, we need to talk to the, to the contractor about exercising some of those.
Absolutely. I mean, that should not even be a, 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 that, that should be an absolute. Because they, they push me to my limit, and I don't have nothing to do with it.
I got it.
Just as an odd looker, I'm fed up with that.
Yeah. And I will say.
Consequences for that kind of, you know, work.
Yeah. The one that I'm most disappointed in is the handrail. I was really looking for some more proactive, proactive management of that situation. The storefront, the lead, the scheduling issue on the storefront, they had very little or no control over on that one, but I was expecting a lot more on the, on the handrail issue.
I mean, the last I heard, it was supposed to be done last November.
Uh, the original date was January. Yeah, January, yeah. But still, they are late. Your point is well, well taken.
I honestly think there should be some, you know, consequences for that kind of stuff.
Steve, I am directing you to have them contact Jean after this meeting, damn it.
I was going to say, if you're messing with Point, you're messing with Jean.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. Thanks, have a good night.
I actually do have one more.
Oh, sure.
For real question. I know, I know. So, so, and you've probably told us this before, and I apologize if I don't remember, but is this, is this a wrap then for Prop S? These last three scheduling outlook projects at Washington, Trout Wine, and Mosaic?
We have been, we have now a very good financial tracking sheet. And if everything continues, of course, the further we go, the more confident we'll have with the money. But we are projecting to have a surplus, so we made reference to some of the jobs that were previously delayed.
Right.
At some point in the near future, as, as our confidence grows on that, we need to start, we need to do a reprioritization of here's, here's how much money we think we'll have left over, and then a reprioritization of those jobs that we placed on hold, and then we'll kick some of those off.
Yeah, and, yeah, so that's exactly what I, so this is everything that we haven't scratched.
Correct, yes.
And then we'd like to go back to the drawing board to reprioritize. And then I think I read in the budget document, Marshall, that we'll have to file some different paperwork if we aren't able to spend all of the Prop S funding, but it's not a big deal. We just have to make sure we properly do.
Yeah, I, I'll follow guidance on Gilmore and Bell through all of that, but we'll spend it all, it's just within the timeframe.
Right.
You have to, you have to do some filing.
Right, yeah, I forget what the date was, but I saw that in the budget document that...
That brings up a good point, actually. Is the Mosaic elevator project the last one, the last big one out of this?
That's the last one that we have on, on the plan right now.
Because I think that if that goes the way it might go, that surplus might shrink just a smidge. Because we have no idea what's going to happen until we start really getting into that building and seeing what kind of surprises are left over.
Yeah, and you are correct. That has, that building has.
Quirks.
Yeah, that's a lot of quirks.
Scott? What is the projected surplus? I know it'll change, but what are you projecting it at now?
Um, well, we've got, Marshall's probably not going to be happy with, if I don't share this very accurately, but I, maybe I could follow up with you guys and send you an email with the surplus. And then we could also put into that email, maybe relist out all the jobs that we placed on hold.
That's great. I mean, quite frankly, I was a little concerned that we would be over budget, given, I, I know all of this was planned for pre-pandemic, and, you know, we've had to, to table some projects or cancel some projects. But I was just, I was worried that the balance that we are showing there, sixteen million, given the complexity of what we're taking on, I was a little worried that we were going to be over budget, especially with what's going on at Mosaic. So however it's working out where we've got a surplus, I think it's, I think you guys are doing a great job with that somehow.
Appreciate it. And what I'll just say to just add a little bit of background to that is, the, one of the big changes that we made is we really went back to the drawing board for quite a number of options at Washington. That was a big credit in our favor. And we did really the same thing at Mosaic. We did a little bit of that a few months ago for Forder. Each one, each of those jobs had shown then some, some savings that we realized that helped on that.
Correct, and it, and it also maintained the integrity of the safety, even though we redid those.
Yes, right.
It still maintained the, the safety intent, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Awesome.
Marshall?
Steve, I would say a hopeful number right now would be about a million dollar excess. That's a hopeful number, but you never know when you get these type of projects, or if you can get into something that's...
If you have anything that I want to work with, we do additional work, it is impressive. I'm really impressed to, to you guys for, you know, whittling down the expenses on several of those projects.
I'm, I'm really impressed. That's all I can say. I, I'm just really impressed by that.
I am too.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is strategic plan update, employee support, Dr. Shannon Pike.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Shannon Pike. I'm Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and tonight, I'm giving an update on employee support in the strategic plan. Within the theme four, we are focusing on our work for recruitment of staff, retention, improvement, engagement, and recognition of our staff, diversifying our workforce, and creating and leveraging community partnerships and networks. Through this work, we continue to work together with different stakeholders to establish relationships and identify opportunities in the areas of employee support. And this year, the Recruitment, Retention, and Onboarding Committee is representative of all employee groups and all buildings. These components all fall into our efforts surrounding recruitment and retention of our employees and the ongoing support we strive to provide to them. Recruitment of staff is ongoing, and we, as a district, are constantly striving to find ways to market and attract employees, both certified and classified. Some recruitment strategies to note are listed above for you. Competitive wages, My Melville Story series, open interviews, Grow Your Own scholarships, the Recruitment, Retention, and Onboarding Committee, and opportunities for student employment. So what does this look like? Competitive pay obviously is one factor that has assisted in the recruiting as well as the retention of our employees. We are seeing that as these positions are being posted externally in some of our even harder to fill positions, we are getting those applicants from our neighboring districts where in the past, we may not have seen that. And even teachers later in their tenure are choosing to come to our district later in the schedule. My Melville Story series, a series of videos released in the spring, produced and supported by our lovely communications department, has continued into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and shares the experiences of our employees. My Melville story and what it looks like to be a teacher, a bus driver, a custodian, and a technology department member, and several others, and highlights what it means to be a Melville School District employee. Next spring, we'll continue to share these stories of employees and highlight more of their experiences. Also, we continue to brainstorm ways to visually get our district's name and website out into the community. Sharing that we are hiring in the community is an important recruitment strategy because we know that many of our own community members choose and have a desire to work within our own Melville School District. Hosting open interviews several times throughout the year has been very beneficial. And our next open interviews are set for May eighth and June fifteenth from ten to noon at our district central office. So please check out our social media and our district website for more information to come. And we continue to partner with colleges and universities in placing our student teachers and practicum students in all grades and subject areas across the district. This has been helpful as we continue to identify any harder to fill positions with those students that we may have within our college programs to work in our district that are harder to fill. And we're able to use those contacts from local universities to partner with building principals so that they can reach out and network with those potential graduates as openings become available. The number of student teachers and practicum teachers vary year to year based on those students in the programs as well as from fall to spring. Melville School District participated again in the year's Grow Your Own Scholarship, and we awarded four recipients from Oakville High School and four from Melville High School. The Grow Your Own Scholarship provides scholarships to those future educators who are pursuing a career in education, encouraging and supporting the growth of our own Melville School District alumni that are currently enrolled in college and continuing their path in education. And each year, we continue to promote student opportunities for work over the summer months. Our retention strategies, we look at retention and overall culture of our staff, and we understand that it's not just about the hiring of the best people, but it's about retaining them. Some retention strategies to note, again, are those competitive wages, Melville mentions, workplace culture, and professional development, our exit surveys, and the work of the Recruitment, Retention, and Onboarding Committee. The annual practice of analyzing competitive pay for all employee groups will continue to help our district retain the quality staff that we have. And you saw that on some of our presentations tonight, the average years of those teachers that are staying with us year over year. And additionally, we know the positive impact recognition has on morale and culture within an organization. This year, central office team, along with communications, delivered five hundred and fifty-four Melville mentions, Melville mentions. They were submitted and delivered to staff recognizing them by their own students, staff, and families within the Melville community. And also, we continue to analyze or pan... to analyze our panorama survey results twice a year by working with building principals to disaggregate that data and coming up with actionable plans based on the feedback and data received from those results. You kind of heard Dr. Moss speak to that tonight as well. Training and professional development is another retention strategy, and we're always looking for efforts to improve the overall completion of our exit surveys for employees that leave our organization so that we have a better understanding of their overall experience and/or the reason why they're choosing to leave. To continue to gain a better understanding of our teachers' experience, discussions and taking on, and talking with our newer teachers within the first semester of working with us is an important aspect of retention. This January, I had the privilege of meeting with all teachers in small focus groups and talking with them about their new hire experience within the first semester of their hire, and I asked them several questions. What's going well for you, what's maybe not going so well for you, what additional supports could we offer you as a district, and what would that look like? And in doing so, many of the comments from those new teachers centered around the importance of a strong mentoring program. This common theme became a product and recommendation of the Recruitment, Retention, and Onboarding Committee, and a mentor is provided to any educator during their first or second year in the field of education. The mentoring program has been revamped to include crossover days with the mentee and mentor in August, prior to the start of the school year, and will include additional layers of support and resources while also adding in opportunities for feedback and constant dialogue. The hope is that the mentee and mentor feel supported with additional touchpoints with not just their mentor, but also their building administrator, curriculum directors, and department chairs in areas like curriculum, classroom management, planning and preparation, and student engagement. There are built-in touchpoints for the new teachers and mentors throughout the year to support the process and assess how the year is going. Some onboarding strategies, consistent hiring, onboarding, onboarding procedures, all the things that we're using to measure a new hires experience for our new teachers and classified staff, include follow-up surveys will be included in the work of the Recruitment, Retention, and Onboarding Committee. So what does this continue to look like for us? The focus of our recruitment retention, and that's a lot of words, I kind of shortened it, RROC, just so you know, it's a lot of words to say, has been on how best to market our positions and to ensure hiring procedures are consistent district-wide while also beginning to look at the retention of our staff. The new focus of teacher groups, the mentoring program, and ongoing feedback of new staff are a few of the items that came out of the committee this year. Consistent communications in our hiring process have followed up with each candidate regardless of the position that they're filling in our district, and human resources works closely with building administrators over the next year to build a check-in and follow-up system at the 30-day mark, 60 days, 90 days, and hopefully that 365-day mark they're choosing to return to work with us year over year. This will give us the ability to reflect and modify any processes needed to ensure we are providing new staff with the tools and information to be successful in their tenure with the Melville School District. And in years to come, we will work with the district strategic plan to evaluate our progress in the area of employee support and look at those hysterical trends to identify any needs or areas where we have more opportunities for growth. I said this last year when I presented to you, we are all recruiters, we all represent the Melville School District, and we must understand what our needs are for both classified and certified to be able to address them in creating a welcoming and inclusive working environment continues to strengthen our culture. Growing our employees and building capacity around the idea of everyone as a part of our recruitment and retention will only make our organization stronger. Thank you.
I, I just wanna really commend you on what you've done the last, is, are you, have you been in the position two years now?
Two years.
Um, in the, I mean, I've been on the board for, this, I'm going on my eighth year, and I can tell you that these are questions that we would ask and get nothing, frankly. Um, you know, and, uh, so what you have brought to us and what you continue to bring to us, and the data, and keeping track of our employees and their sense of belonging and pay and all those things, that's just so valuable, because as we know, without a strong workforce and our, our strong employees, our district, you know, that's how we thrive. So, really great job, I mean, really, really. And we asked, like I said, we used to ask questions and just sort of get blank stares, there weren't exit surveys, there weren't things that, at least to our knowledge, maybe people that have worked here a long time might say, well, yeah, there were, but like, we were never informed of them. So, definitely appreciate everything you've done, and I hope that our employees feel, feel the difference, you know, really starting to feel the difference. I can't even keep, and thank you to everybody that takes the time to go to the schools and give the Melville mentions out and things like that, because I can't even keep up with them on social media, much less, I don't know how you guys do it in a day, so. And yesterday I did, or one day this week, I did an MSBA president Zoom call, and we, in the chat box, they would ask specific questions, and they would ask us, what does our district do? I can tell you, I was pretty darn proud about what our district does comparatively, we're talking about across the state, you know, the entire state. So, um, so great kudos to you for everything. I was able to kind of lean on your presentation on some of their questions, so, so, good job.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to 2024-2025 classified employee salary schedules, Dr. Pike.
Good evening. Dr. Shannon Pike, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, presenting on the consideration of the 24-25 classified salary schedules. Obviously, we are here to recommend the 24-25 salary schedules for board approval this evening, so what will the proposed 24-25 salary schedules continue to do? It will maintain the competitiveness of classified salaries to recruit and retain the high-quality support staff. This includes our bus drivers, custodians, office personnel staff, technology staff, school food technicians, and other non-certificated hourly employees. How did we get here? We talk a lot about that continued salary annual review process used that we started last year. Well, we've always reviewed it, but obviously we had a very thorough review process last year in 23-24 with classified directors to maintain that competitiveness within the market. Market comparisons were based on data of surrounding school districts and information from department directors about industries even outside of education. The recommendation is 3.7% added overall to classified salaries. This is an investment of $680,000 to classified salaries with $523,000 for the cost of advancing the steps, a total of $1.2 million invested into classified salaries district-wide. It is important to note that individual salary increases will vary due to the structure of those schedules and which step you are on, but an overall distribution of that 3.7% was added to classified salaries. As a retention strategy, employees will receive a bigger pay increase every fifth step in a particular salary schedule. The salary structure provides pathways for growth and development of our employees and provides clear opportunities for which is a powerful retention strategy. So looking at this next several slides, I wanted to provide, some of your questions were about the retention, were about the retirement and resignations of our employees. So as I go through, I will briefly just give you that overview for some of those harder to fill positions and how we have significantly seen an increase, actually a decrease, but it's a positive increase, at our departments to highlight the impact that we've had and continue to have on our recruitment and retention. So for facilities, when comparing our retirements and resignations from '22 to '23 to '23-24, the district had five retirements and 11 resignations in '22-23 compared to two retirements and five resignations in '23-24. Since July 1st, we hired 23 custodians, and custodians have also taken advantage of the opportunities of growth and advancement and moved to other positions. Additionally, when meeting with head custodians earlier this month, they shared that the custodians in their buildings are invested in the district and feeling like they have a part of their school community, and the training program that they are receiving that has been put in place for custodians this summer has been great for retention. Technology department, the technology department, again, has retained all of its employees from '22-23 to '23-24, and we continue to analyze the competitive wages of the technology department. Office personnel, when comparing building secretary specifically, retirements and resignations from '22-23, the district had one retirement and three resignations in '22-23 compared to zero retirements and only two resignations in '23-24. Since July 1st, we've hired three building secretaries, and these secretaries have also taken advantage of opportunities for growth and advancement. Our food services department, when comparing food service technicians specifically, retirements and resignations, the district had one retirement and 12 resignations in '22-23 compared to zero retirements and six resignations in '23-24. Food services is currently fully staffed and has been able to fully staff throughout the year without, when any resignation may have occurred. Transportation, when comparing bus driver retirements and resignation, the district had four retirements and five resignations in '22-23 compared to three retirements and four resignations in '23-24. Since July 1st, we've hired seven bus drivers, and additionally, when meeting with the transportation department earlier this month, they shared that when asking what is going well, it was the training that they received during their onboarding by the transportation trainers and the bus mechanics that ensure their buses are safe for our students and drivers to drive our students to and from school every day. And parents, teachers, and community education, when we look at comparing our cafeteria recess monitor retirements and resignations, the district had zero retirements and eight resignations in '22-23 compared to zero retirements and seven resignations in '23-24, and cafeteria recess monitors currently are fully staffed. Again, I thank you for your consideration for this, and understand that we will continue to study comparable districts and market comparisons on a yearly basis, and will continue to work with directors to understand the staffing needs of their department to maintain competitive salaries for classified employees by looking holistically at schedules, scales, and departments. I think I asked for the...
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll, I'll do, I can do the motion. Okay, does anybody have any questions? All right. If I can please get a motion to approve the 24-25 classified employee salary schedules as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is, you don't need abstain. Motion carries 7-0. 6-0, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, um, next is, thank you very much, Dr. Pike. His advocacy committee update, Jeff Wollman.
I'll up and apologize upfront, things got a little bit longer than I had planned for this because of some things that happened in the last 24 hours, so I will try to make it as efficient possible in trying to explain what's going on. There's three weeks left in the legislative session, they have the budget to get done in two weeks, and it's not going very quickly in any way since it was delayed to get to the Senate in the first point. That's something they have to have completed by two weeks from tomorrow, and chances of that are seeming slim at the moment mainly because there's been a lot of, shall we say, complications with communication. But one of the items that happened last week was the passage of Senate Bill 727. It's this bill that started out for ESA expansion, that was a 15-page bill, that blossomed into 163 pages because of everything that was thrown into it, and the vote for getting it completed just passed with 83 votes. It originally passed with 82, and they found on Monday that someone was marked as absent when they actually voted for it, so the actual total was 83. The bill passed out of the Senate with 19 votes out of 18 necessary, so this bill barely passed in both sides of the legislature. The discussions that happened with it on the floor on Thursday of last week, I watched the majority of it. To say it was very pointed is an understatement. There were some very, very passionate legislators on both sides of the bill, both for and against it, that were talking about this at length. There were 24 legislators, 14 Republicans and 10 Democrats that posted a total of 53 amendments to this bill. None of them were discussed in chamber. That is extremely unusual, because any of these amendments that would have passed for this bill would have sent it back to the Senate for further discussion, and with the razor-thin margin they had for getting this bill passed, they actually had to take a different bill from the House, Bill 2287, that's a bill about virtual education across the state, and they had to put fixes into that bill that made Senate Bill 727 pass. That is also extremely unusual, because the items that were added to a bill about virtual education covered for defining a home educator as not quite a school, because schools aren't allowed to have firearms on their premises. They also made some additional changes related to some deficiencies in the bill, and this bill is a fiscal mess, to say at least. It adds some very beneficial items for public education, but the main issue is the fact that the fiscal note for next year will put $107 million hole in general revenue and continue down that track till it's fully implemented in fiscal year 31, which will pull away $467 million hole in general revenue for the state. That revenue is shrinking, the budget surplus we have as a state will probably be gone by fiscal year 26, and with all the work being done on trying to get taxes down and general revenue down, putting something in there that has no, no mandates to fund any of these changes to teacher pay, to ESAs, it plays around with the foundation formula, it also plays around with transportation funding. It's not a great bill in any sense of the word, and it's also been marked as being a bipartisan-supported bill, because four Democrats voted for it and 40 decided not to. When 90% of one side of the legislature decides that they don't like it, that's not what I would call true bipartisan support. So, in fact, in the last 24 hours, MSBA basically put out a resolution to send as a unified presence of all school board members to tell the governor to veto it. It's been passed, the only way to stop it at this point is to have the governor veto it, and that's something that has to happen in the next couple of weeks. If he signs it, it takes effect in August, but if he vetoes it, it could possibly be going back to a special session to veto it, which happens over the summer. I don't think there's necessarily the votes to get the governors' veto overridden with as tight of a margin as this bill passed with. So there's a resolution that I'd like to read for us to agree to as a statement of this board being against the support of Senate Bill 727. One sec to get that up, my apologies. Whereas the Melville School Board has been elected by our constituents to govern our local school district and so advocate in their best interest. Whereas the Melville School District has 9,815 students enrolled for whom we are entrusted to defend access to high-quality public education. Whereas we as the board hold our responsibility to ensure the success of our students and our schools in the utmost importance. Whereas the Missouri General Assembly has truly agreed and finally passed Senate Bill 727, which is estimated to have a cost of $467 million annually when fully implemented. Whereas we as the Melville School Board feel this legislation will jeopardize the financial future of school districts by the burden of unfunded mandates without sufficient funding from the Missouri General Assembly. Whereas state budget leaders have expressed that due to flat state revenues, they cannot guarantee ongoing funding for existing educational expenses such as transportation funding. Whereas Governor Michael L. Parson has been a defender of public education by proposing budgets that fully fund the foundation formula, provide historic funding levels for school transportation, and increase funding for baseline teacher salary grants, and whereas the governor must now consider what action to take regarding the passage of Senate Bill 727 and consider all impacts to the state in both the policy and legislation and the financial impacts, and therefore it be resolved, the Melville School Board urges Michael, Governor Michael L. Parson to veto Senate Bill 727 to defend the best interests of public education and the financial future of our state and schools. I'd like to make a resolution that we agree to this and send it to the governor's desk as support against Senate Bill 727. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0-1. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, next is action items by consent, A through M. Does anyone need to pull anything or have any questions or discussion about any of those things, items? Nope, okay. If I can please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through M.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to communications, we don't have anyone signed up, do we, just, okay, no one is signed up, so Patrick, if you could please put us into closed session?
Motion in our closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same or other items under Missouri revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and section 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or... hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employment or applications for employment, section 610.02113, legal action, causes of action, or litigation, section 610.0211.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes? Patrick?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that you had to sign up and talk. But I was going to come in and just say something about... Point secondary. Is it okay if I talk?
I don't think so. Not... You can email us or talk to us after the meeting, but I think we have policy rules that you can't do that.
Oh, wait, I didn't know. I'm sorry.
But if you want to...
I just had a question, and I didn't know that you have to sign up.
I, uh...
Okay. So how about if you let us adjourn, and then we will step away and we'll talk to you?
Okay.
Does that work?
Thank you so much.
Okay, sure. All right.